Okay, it is that magic time. I'll call this meeting to order. Everyone rise please.
Our president alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any amendments to the agenda?
I've got one, I don't know if it needs to be on here, but I would like to add it just to be safe. Under, um, business continued, I'd like to add a C, and that's discuss evaluations for the city manager and the city clerk. Other than that, any others?
Oh, disclosure on the South Water Street.
Be attending the block party?
You only have to disclose if you're drinking, no.
Okay.
That's an appropriate disclosure, I think.
That is, yeah. Yeah, no, it's, hey, he's a resident of that area, and so, by all means. Any other disclosures on any items on the agenda? If not, we don't have any visitors that are going to speak. I'd entertain a motion for the city council meeting minutes for July 18th, 2017.
I'll make the motion over the minutes.
Second.
Lowell made motion, Rennie seconded. Any discussion, corrections? Jeff?
Page two, two four, sixth line from the bottom. Records restoration fee is required by not to be statute. Then on the next page, amendments to the municipal development plan, two, four, the fifth line. Speaking as the president of the Virgin's partnership stated that he wanted to be supportive of a local business trying to sustain their building. What exactly was meant by that? Sustain their?
Business problem.
Their profitability, buildings profitability? That just seemed very unclear to me. How about buildings profitability?
It works, it's just make sure that, you know, you know that the.
But that was sort of your intention, right? Yeah.
Building profitability?
That was all I had.
Well, while we're down there, in that area, I have some stuff before that, but while we're in that paragraph, um, let's see, after that line, two lines down, it says, he also reported having researched in other designated downtowns, and some do not allow anything but retail on the ground floor. I don't know whether I said that or not, but I think the wording would be better if it said, um, he researched other designated downtowns and, um, let's see, what did I have for the reading, my own writing here?
While he's reading it, I think he did say it, I wasn't here, but I did watch it on TV. I think you did say something about ground, something to what ground floor.
And it should be, instead of just some do allow anything, don't allow anything, it should be a number of them do not allow anything.
Or there are towns that do not allow anything.
Allow anything, yeah. Yeah, either way, either way.
You got that anyway?
I got it.
Either way.
Either way.
Okay.
Now, if we back up while I've got the floor, second page, in the planning commission appointments, there are a couple of comments that I know I made that I'd like to have in the minutes because of the people involved. I know that in the planning board, uh, planning commission appointments, that I said, I thanked Jason Farrell.
Yes.
For ten years of service on the planning commission. And I also, I think, mentioned that he also served some time as the zoning administrator when Mel was unable to do so. And then, I also mentioned that planning commissions have to have between three and nine members, and even though we weren't reappointing new people right now, that we have five, so we're within the requirement, and that the chairman of the planning commission was going to be doing the recruiting.
Uh, yes, to some degree, we're, I mean, we're in the process of updating the regulations to be in compliance with the, you know, the MVP. Nearly past MVP, so we've got five people, we're, I'm a little reticent to bring on people right away, because they're fairly minor changes, and we should be done in a couple of months, but yes, we want to, I'd like us to get back up to seven, but it may be a few months before we're there.
And, uh, that's all I have.
Anyone else? Do you have all that, Joe?
I do.
And sorry, I didn't actually, I didn't get to reading these minutes until fairly close to the, to the meeting time, or else I would've just called you and talked to you on the phone about it, so.
Okay. We have corrections, all those in favor of the minutes, with those corrections, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? Any questions about the warrants? I see that people were signing them.
So as I mentioned earlier, we still have two sets of warrants, one very short set, I think there's four invoices that relate to FY 17, and all the larger packet obviously is for the current fiscal year.
Anything else there? All right, not, we're going to move right on to number five, business, and we'll talk about Mark's party. South Water Block Party.
So, one of the things, obviously, as, as, as city manager, I do have the authority to grant, uh, certain public assemblage, uh, public assemblages, and the ordinance sets forth various classes, if you will, but I can just tell you that, other than the closing of Park Street, I do not take the liberty to close a street for a party, or unless there's some emergency. So that's why I bring this to the city council, because, you know, if, I don't know how many years this has been going on, I'm, this will be the fourth, all right? So I will, I will tell you that, that it is not unanimous in this neighborhood about the street closure, but it's not as though, uh, there is some, uh, major outcry of, of closing the street for this two-hour period. So I just wanted to report that, and so it would be, it would be my recommendation that the city council authorize the closing of, uh, South Water Street, from Robert Street to the end of the street, from five until seven on August 27th, uh, which would enable me to issue the public assemblage permit for their block party.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Motion made by Lowell, second by Rennie. Any other discussion? Uh, one of the things that I think would be wise is to keep letting them come, as long as we don't have 100% in agreeance with closing, uh, it's probably better to stay in our control, that way, we can not do like we do with the fishing derby, so I think that's a good idea. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Lynn, anything to offer on grass clippings in the street?
Well, I, in the package is four suggested wordings, and I'll tell you after the storm that we had, let's see, was it last Wednesday, maybe, or Tuesday? I can tell you on Bowman, that we literally had to clear the.
Caspian.
Caspian, because they were full of, the water couldn't go down the basin. So I think it's something at some point we need to deal with, because it's going, obviously, to the creek and to the lake, so, you know, it's, it's very common, and it was, was not difficult getting language at all, because most Burlington, South Burlington, all the bigger cities already have as an ordinance. So I just had some suggested wordings that came right out of there, I didn't paraphrase it, I just took it right out of their books, um, and they're all marked in yellow. And I think part of it is that we need to talk about too, if we get to this, I sort of like the one, the, the first one that's on there that says it can't be anything, so you can't leave old couches, you can't leave, if it's in the public right-of-way, which would be probably between the sidewalk and the road, you just can't leave stuff just there. It's, you know, that's not their property to leave it there. You know, we put out free stuff all the time in front of our office, and we do put it in there, but it's like gone in 10 minutes. But when it stays for a couple of days, or three days. Yeah, there's chairs out everywhere. So I like that one where it says they can't deposit anything into that area, whether it's grass, or garbage, or rubbish, whatever, except for when it's being picked up, um, by a garbage service. And then it's as simple as, there was, the last one's a very simple one, one line, so it could be as complicated, or as, um, more detailed as the other ones, like, it talks about alleys, and, and we own alleys, so it might be something to include.
Mel, from the legal side, you want?
You have any comments?
Well, you know what, I, I apologize for not digging deeply into this, the first thing that I would like to do is take a look at our ordinance and see if we have one that is in place that covers some of this. I think that we, I think we do have something, but it's probably not as exhaustive as this here.
You brought something to the council.
About rubbish and, yeah.
Something, but it didn't say anything about clippings.
That's true, right.
I think it said snow, didn't it? I think there was something about snow.
Definitely have something on snow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it could be added to whatever we have already, but you would ask me to get some sample of language, and there's four of them.
So let me, let me ask you about grass, grass clippings. Are you, uh, not every street in Virgin's has curbing and catch basins, I mean, some have an open drainage system and people mow, all right? And I will, I will tell you that, uh, I don't want to say that the public works department's, department is the worst offender, but I happen to be driving down Panton Road, and, and we were mowing the welcome to Virgin sign, and I can assure you that, that, you know, our operator just simply, you know, there's no curbing on Panton Road, and he mowed, he mowed that.
He mowed the ditch.
He mowed it, and I can assure you that a certain amount of that grass went out into the road, and I can assure you when the people were coming into town, uh, from Basin Harbor, as they approached there, that that, those clippings didn't stay in that road very long, it were blown right off the road. So my question is, is if we were going to attempt to regulate grass clippings, are you, are you thinking that we should absolutely regulate grass clippings to the extent that, that what I just described would be illegal? Or would that only apply to areas of town with curbing and catch basins?
In that particular location, there's a pretty good ditch right there, so if, and they gotta, they're keeping it mowed around that sign, so he is mowing the ditch.
That's what they do, yeah.
And, and there's other areas, I mow my ditch.
All he would have to do is come back onto the road and blow it right back in, which is what I do for our street sidewalk, as soon as I cut it, just run the mower right over one more time, and it blows it back into my yard.
Yeah, I, I'm just, you know, I, you know, just want, just trying to get clarity, that's all, yeah.
Rennie?
Well, one of the things is, who's going to enforce it? I can't imagine that unless it is a lot of grass in the street, that the police department would do, I mean, they, we would probably, the first logical enforcer would be probably the police department, um, and I can't imagine them doing anything for anything that, unless it's really major amount of grass in the street, um, so, I'm not so sure that, if we had something that, something as minor as that would ever be, catch anybody's attention, because they've, they've got a whole bunch of other things to take care of other than that.
Who does the snow?
And even the snow thing, we don't do much with the, with the snow. I mean, technically speaking, as I, if I recall the ordinance right, everybody is supposed to clear the snow on the sidewalk in front of their house. We do it, but we don't have to do it. Um, and, and that's on the ordinance, that's not enforced either, but, um, so, I don't know, I mean, if we had something, I'm not so sure it would be a problem, except where it'd be a problem for somebody who's deliberately, they're mowing a big thing and it shoots all out into the street, which could, in some places, block the water flow, and it certainly looks unsightly.
I will tell you, Lynn, that, that, let's say if somebody, uh, at their house, let's say that they're, they have a paved driveway, and, and they, and they, the way that they plow their driveway, or with their snow blower, they blow all the snow out into the middle of the road, or plow across the road and leave it on the green strip of their neighbor across the street, and in some instances, they do that after all done, and, and it freezes, and you end up with this lump, um, sitting out there, and, you know, either George or I deal with that. You know, I, we, we don't, there's no tickets or anything, but I can tell you that if, I will tell you that if Jim Laro comes to, I mean, Jim works for me, but I can tell you that if Jim Laro comes to me with a problem out there on a city street, that a city property owner has conducted themselves such that it's diminishing their capabilities, George and I deal with it. They don't get tickets, but I can tell you, we don't have a problem getting on the phone with somebody and say, and telling them, and educating them, that we have a law, we have an ordinance, so, you know, so not all, um, you know, I don't, I don't see this being anything handled any differently than that, Rennie, I just, I don't, I don't see, I don't see George.
Yeah, when there's a big problem.
Yeah, we would, we would deal with it.
Matt would like to say something.
Would you consider, as opposed to amending an ordinance, just using it as an educational piece, perhaps through?
I'm not necessarily doing anything. I didn't, I didn't expect people to get tickets. My only concern was trying to get the, the, all of the basins so they work.
Yeah.
Um, and you, if you keep piling grass in it all, all summer long, like we've had to mow this year, it's creating a problem, is flooding the streets and people's driveways. So, I mean, either, you know, I just thought adding an ordinance, just like plowing the snow, after a little while, people get to know that, that ordinance.
So, if we were to go just purely education, I think that's what you're suggesting, Matt, of where, you know, where Front Porch Forum, City Voice, and Report, we're approaching this not from, because an ordinance, there, an ordinance is an ordinance, and there's, when you adopt that, there's, you have to decide whether or not it's a criminal or civil ordinance, and you establish the fine system, and that's what it is, all right? So, you know, if you, if, if you would, uh, I'm happy to share with you our, our existing ordinance, but that is not specific to grass clippings, and if we want to attack this, if you will, by, you know, by education, you know, first, I'm, I think that's fine, and we, you know, I think, Mike, you know, I mean, it's not an issue, you know, Front Porch Forum, and City Voice, and it's, because we're trying to educate folks.
Let's say, Lynn, that have you, have you bring it out at the past city council meeting? I changed my own behavior, just, I hadn't even thought of it, so, I think just getting the word out may cause people to think twice about it.
It won't make the city voice, but, um, the, the other thing too, is, I wondered if you'd be willing to reach out to A and R Agency, National Resources, State of Vermont, and see if they have some literature or something that we could actually publicize, or ways, it would be some good key points, some bullets that we could put on Front Porch Forum, it would just help with the verbiage. Not necessarily is this mandatory, but at least, it's a step that, as Matt's recommending, that we try to educate the people. And the resources that we have, Front Porch Forum, City Voice, we could even try to get Andy to do an article in, Addy Indy, and I could even talk to Cookie and see if she would do something. I'm, I'm sure they would try to be helpful, but I think we need some sort of a standard verbiage that, that the state sees fit.
Is that opening a can of worms that, you know, we may not want to open?
I don't think so, because we're not, I don't think that we're putting a, a ordinance out there, and, so I, no, I think it's a, I think it's a positive way to take and try to get the communications out, I just didn't know what, rather than reinvent the wheel, they may have literature already designed to help address some of this stuff, and there's, there's a lot of people there that like to, uh, help, you know, do the right thing.
Is this Lincoln, Vermont, or Lincoln, Nebraska?
No, this is all Vermont ordinance.
Okay, this here, okay.
So, just, just an idea.
Yeah.
Anything else? So, Mel, are you going to take and just spot check our ordinance?
I'm gonna look at it, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and, and if you would, either we can bring it back to another meeting, or you can share, we can share it directly with the council, just don't hit reply all, so that we can decide whether we need to bring it back to the table, uh, at our level, our ordinance level, or if there's something else from A and R that might be able to help. Okay, um, we'll move on to sandwiches, sandwich boards, and temporary signs, and city right of way. Mel?
Sure. I didn't necessarily invite Shannon to come to the meeting, but he sent me an email, you know, he, he, he checks your agendas, and, uh, I will tell you that, at the last planning commission, or may, and maybe even the planning commission meeting before that, the planning commission has been talking about sandwich board signs, and even, even to the extent that, I missed them, when I had my knees replaced, I missed a meeting, and, and at that meeting, the, the, the planning commission, uh, I have no recol, I wasn't at the meeting, but that's not totally any excuse, because I should be paying attention to what the planning commission is doing, but anyway, at that meeting that I missed, we believe, uh, the planning commission changed a regulation as it relates to sandwich board signs, and what the, what the previous regulation, how the previous regulation read, was that sandwich board signs were exempt in the central business district and the northern gateway district, all right? Now, it is silent relative to where, in the right-of-way, in front of the business outside, so there is, you know, Shannon would agree that there is some room for improvement, I, so, the, anyway, at the meeting that I missed, the group did away with the, the only in the central business district and, and northern gateway district, but kept the other part of it, which basically said you could put a sandwich board sign anywhere, um, as long as it was, didn't cause, um.
Just fucking temporary.
Yeah, you know, have it in front of me.
Business hours.
But it was also about, about not unsafe to pedestrians and this type of thing, all right? So, so, couple things, one is, I can tell you, there is a law that off-premise signs are illegal, all right? So, that is an absolute given, and any sign within a city right-of-way is off-premise, all right? Now, there is a law that allows municipalities to adopt ordinances dealing with, with signs, you know, within the right-of-way, and I, you know, I think that, you know, allowing a restaurant to have a chalkboard out in front of their place to say that corn chowder is the soup of the day, I mean, to me, that's part of a central business district, and I don't, I don't have any issues with that, but I will tell you, it's an off-premise sign. And so I think that, that those kinds of signs ought to be specifically referenced and clarified as to what is allowed. Now, I will tell you that, you know, Shannon and I, we play a little ping pong relative to things, and I really think that the city council is who's in charge of our streets, and I think that the Development Review Board is in charge of, of development on private property. And so, uh, I think that when, in our zoning regulations, when, when you have zoning regulations talking about sandwich board signs, and it's silent relative to within the street right-of-way or outside, you know, I, I still think that the city council is in charge of, of the rights-of-way, I really think that you are.
And I would agree with that, simply because these are not a, it's not a land use issue, and, and we are dealing with the right-of-way, and that's really out of our jurisdiction as a planning commission.
You know, the other thing, you know, speaking about education, is, is I think that people don't understand that you can, if you have a garage sale, you know, some people think that there's a constitutional right that you can put garage sale signs, you know, salt them all around the, the community, all right? And I can tell you during, I will tell everybody right now, during the golf season, I play golf at seven o'clock in the morning on Saturdays, and seven o'clock in the morning on Sundays, and I get up at six o'clock, and I take a shower, and I tour the city, and I pick up signs and put them in the back of my car. I do it every Saturday and Sunday morning, roam around. If you wonder why there's not too many tag sale signs in Virgin's, all right, that's why, because they go in the back of my car Saturdays and Sunday morning, I bring them down to the dumpster on Sunday afternoon, that's where they go. So I will tell you that I will stop doing that in a heartbeat, all right? If the city council feels that people do have the right to put garage sales, any, any signs, any signs on city streets, whether, why, you just tell me, I'll stop doing it, all right? But I, I really think that we ought to go one way or the other, as it relates to sandwich board signs, and yard sale signs, and, you know, community supper signs, and whatever, whatever signs you're talking about. Uh, you know, for instance, sandwich board signs, you know, I, I don't mean to pick on St. Peter's Closet, but to have St. Peter's Closets located on Green Street, and then to have a, a sandwich board sign up in front of, of, in front of Linda's chained to a utility pole, and sometimes the arrow's pointing in the wrong direction, all right, because somebody has moved the sign around to the corner, and they're pointing them to Burlington, when in reality, the thrift store is down, you know, the thing is just kind of out of control to me, and, and, you know, I think that we, I'd like to have clarity, I think that there's education, but I think that our, our own ordinances, you know, when I, when I missed that meeting and they did away with one, you know, it doesn't even, the ordinance doesn't even read right without number one, all right? So Shannon knows that, but I think before Shannon digs into that, you know, Shannon and I both are wondering, what is the planning commission doing regulating activity within the city street, because really, that's a city council thing.
Rennie?
Well, I haven't read what's in the, in the ordinances relative to what you dealt with, with the planning commission, but I assume that it was kind of an exemption from the sign ordinance.
Correct.
Right? Just saying that we don't, basically, we don't deal with those.
Right.
Okay. So then that leaves it to the city. This issue has been gone over before. Way back when, when I was city manager, we went through this issue about, um, these sandwich boards, and, and actually, there was quite a few discussions about whether we should have some sort of an ordinance to regulate it, and so on, and decided, no, not to do it, because it was felt at the time that there were sufficient powers within, for the city manager, the city council, to, to remove any sandwich board from any place in a public way, anytime they wanted to. And since at the time, which brought it up, there was only one sandwich board that happened to be a problem, because it was obstructing part of a sidewalk. So how did we remediate it? We went to talk to the person, said, would you move the sign and put it so it doesn't obstruct the sidewalk? They did, that was the end of it. And so, um, at that time, we decided, it just wasn't worth all of the stuff that you would have to go through to properly regulate these things, when you do want to have them under certain kinds of circumstances, and other circumstances. In other circumstances, they may become a pain in the butt, but we thought, well, if we, if we have a pain, then let's go and talk with the pain and relieve it that way rather than having an ordinance. So I, I'm just giving you some history. What, you wanna do with it? I mean, I, I, personally, I don't think it's worth doing a heck of a lot with because I, I certainly haven't received an complaint. I don't know whether you did, Mel, about sandwich boards and, and some can get out of, some can get out of hand, but all you have to do is go, as, as Mel does, pick 'em up and take 'em out.
I, I had something I probably should've disclosed at the beginning of this meeting. I had a yard sale this weekend and I put signs out. And I'm gonna have another yard sale on Saturday and hope to put some signs out. But I put 'em out just prior to the sale and then take 'em in.
But if you put 'em out later than ten of seven on Saturdays and Sundays and, uh...
I don't, yeah, okay. I don't know how to do that.
I think that this might be on the agenda for the opposite, where people who own the signs got upset. Because I happen to know that the, one of the community dinners, they have professionally made signs, that Jason from the police department called up Paul Vashon and said, I found these in the dumpster. Do you want them back? And Paul caught, he's just down the street from me, he's like, I have a complaint to the city council. Like, if you don't, you know, don't throw them away. It costs us money. Pick them up. Let us know that you have them. We'll come and pick them up. Tell us where we can have them. Just don't throw them away.
All right, well, okay, so let me, let me...
But that was, that was the, so...
So I've talked to Paul Vashon, all right? So let me just, just to tell you the exact, the, the, the exact story, and that's absolutely right. I didn't need to take 'em to the dumpster. I, I know, I know, I know where they could've gone. But let me just tell you what, what I picked up that day, all right? It wasn't just the community supper at the intersection of South Water Street and Main Street, but there was the community supper, the Addison County Field Days and a garage, and a garage sale sign about this big. You couldn't see a tractor trailer truck coming across the bridge if you were looking down Main Street. So I picked up all three of those signs and I put 'em in the back of my car and they made it to the dumpster. I actually left that sign in my car for a few days, waiting for somebody to find out what happened to the sign, 'cause I wanted somebody to call me, all right? Yeah, I could, yeah. Could I have gone? I didn't know Paul Vashon put the sign out. I've known Paul forever. You know, I don't know who, I don't know who puts them out. It's not like it says posted by Paul Vashon, eight, seven, seven, such and such. So I'm, I'm not gonna go necessarily search it. So I put 'em there, all right? Got scolded, you know, Paul, you know, felt, you know, Mel, you shouldn't have done that. Well, okay, so you're gonna scold me. You make a hazardous situation and you're, and you're gonna scold me. Fine, I can handle it, all right? So in the case of, in the case of, uh, the other thrift store, uh, what the one is on Main Street next to, uh...
Your turn.
Your turn. They put a sign down, they put a sign down on, on that corner. And that one I picked up and I leaned it up against their front door. So that's what I'll be, I'll get up just a little bit earlier and I'll, I'll bring these signs...
I took in, I took in, uh, I, I took in, saw the sign on the corner by the park for the your turn.
Yep.
And I stopped and went into the store. And at the time, my pager was going off for a fire call in New Haven. And I said, you should talk with city hall because your sign is illegal. But I think something that somebody said here a minute ago is the key point, if we have a way as to who posts or places the sign with a name and a contact number, at least, that's a better fit.
I'll take an opportunity in our next meeting to review the ordinance. Sounds like it's somewhat ambiguous and could use a little dialing in. So before we take this any further, I think...
Yeah, I think it's...
I'd like an opportunity to take a look at it.
Yeah, I think we...
And if your garage sale's poorly attended, you know who to talk to.
I'll just say this is a, because we deal with signs all the time in the real estate business. If you have an open house, you can put up a sandwich sign, but you cannot put it up more than 12 hours before the event and it has to be taken down immediately after. So if, as far as a community supper is concerned, certainly they're benefiting the whole community and we don't wanna put their signs in anything, but they have to understand the law. It's the same for everybody. It's not just, you know, it's twen, it's 12 hours before and you have to pick up, up them immediately, including yard, uh, yard sale signs. So, you know, maybe this is just an education thing too. Along with the grass clippings, we can teach them, you put your yard sale up, but not before 24, or 12 hours before and you have to pick it up immediately after.
Let's, uh, let's establish, but I think what Matt has said, let's, uh, let's move on to the next issue on the agenda, but definitely put this back on the agenda. We don't have to make a decision today. But I think we're, we have some good ideas and, uh, so we'll move forward from there. Um, we wanna stay on track here and on time. Corrections, emissions, corrected emissions.
You might want to move right to six, Mike, and then we'll go back to five, D and E after we finish that one. Just, not that there've been a roomful of people, but I don't wanna keep David and Eric here forever.
Okay, all right. So, uh, were they on for a time?
Yeah, six o'clock, yeah.
Six o'clock, okay. All right, we're running a little bit behind, I see that. Um, okay, we're gonna move right to number six and then jump back. Public information meeting, um, on the Vermont Bicycle and Pedestrian Program.
So let me introduce Dave Crawford to you again. He was here a, a, a little while ago, not that long ago. And Eric, I'm gonna destroy his last name, I think it's Alling, is that...
Correct.
Okay, Eric Alling. And I think it's spelt just exactly the way it sounds, Joan, Alling, all right? And Eric works for Stan, Stan Tech, uh, which is our engineering firm for the, uh, for this project, which is the, what we call the North Main Street Sidewalk Project, which there's no such street as North Main Street. But anyway, yeah, this sidewalk picks up at, in front of the Virgens Redemption Center and then goes in front of Kennedy Brothers to a location, uh, across from the police station. And there is a proposed crosswalk there. Part of this grant requires a public informational meeting, and so we are fulfilling this particular requirement of this, of this grant. And David and Eric are here to give a brief report on, on this project. I mean, obviously, it's a not a terribly complicated project, so, but we do need to fulfill this obligation under, under the grant. And so Dave and, and Eric have got a brief presentation for you to let you know what we've done at this point and what the next steps are. And we'll talk a little bit about budget and talk about schedule.
Great. Well, I saw the 10 minutes and I got a little bit nervous, but you just covered about half of it, so. Everybody see that okay? As Mel mentioned, this is the project area. We're talking about North Main Street, along the east side. So this is looking towards downtown Virgens. Uh, the purpose of this meeting is to review the plans we've come up with so far and to get input from the community and allow for feedback that can get factored into the design as we go forward. Uh, again, I'm gonna fly through this, try to keep it to the 10 minutes, but we'll go over the project area in a little more detail, the purpose of the project, the development process that these type of projects follow, go over those plans and then what happens after this meeting. Uh, so the project area again, Mel, pretty well described there. We can zoom in just a little bit. Um, there runs right along North Main Street on the east side, uh, from Virgens Redemption up to the police station where it will cross, uh, Main Street and, and there. Uh, the purpose of this project is to take some of the segments of sidewalk that are within the project area, connect them together, and then get those to tie into the rest of the city's network that is to point south. This was addressed in the 2006 scoping study that talked about needing a sidewalk along the east side of Main Street. And as recently as 2017, municipal development plan, sidewalks were identified as priorities for the community. Uh, so this process, that this project follows is the Municipal Assistance Bureau, or MAB, and we are right at the beginning of that project under conceptual plans. Those have been completed at this point and submitted to the Agency of Transportation for review. The next step we have is environmental documentation, which is basically ready to go. Once that goes in, we'll take comments from the agency, comments that we received tonight, and those will factor into preliminary design, at which point we'll involve the utility companies, although for this particular project, the impacts are minimal, as we'll see. Next step would be right-of-way process. We don't anticipate any right-of-way needs for this project, so that will be an easy clear for this project. And then finally, everything comes together into a final set of contract plans, bid documents, and those are put up, advertised to contractors, bid on, and ultimately constructed. Uh, so I did mention the 2006 scoping study, this particular section of sidewalk was not scoped. Uh, so working with the city, we developed a preferred alternative, uh, which is a five-foot wide concrete sidewalk, pretty much the same as you have all over the city, along with a five-foot grass strip, which will provide space for snow storage in the winter and give a horizontal separation between roadway and sidewalk users. It is mostly that five-foot wide, uh, grass strip all the way through, except at the end there is a utility pole, which we were able to move the sidewalk around. This can help greatly during construction and not have to involve utility companies, which can lead to potential delays in the project. And as I mentioned, we, at this point, are looking like we're gonna completely avoid both permanent and temporary right-of-way impacts. So we can take a look at the project now. We'll start with the typical section. So this is the view as you're standing on the sidewalk, looking to the north. Um, as I mentioned, it's a five-foot grass strip, five-foot sidewalk. And then along the back edge of the sidewalk, it just slopes gradually to tie back into existing ground. This section is pretty typical, so it's really not gonna be a lot of excavation. It's not gonna be a lot of fill on the backside of it. It actually fits in pretty nicely because it's such a flat area. That right-of-way line is a little deceiving. It's only that close right at the beginning of the project and then the right-of-way really peels out towards the east, so we're well within right-of-ways of the entire project. Before we talk about the alignment now, um, as we mentioned, it starts right at the Redemption Center. There is a chunk of existing sidewalk on sort of a raised island. And we pick up right there, carry the sidewalk across the drive, uh, which, if anybody knows the area, it's kind of a wide open sea of pavement right now. So we would propose to add another raised island in this area, which would separate the two drives, give pedestrians a raised space to walk, which would be a little bit safer and more comfortable for them. And it also creates, um, a space for a driveway turnaround here at the salon. That would allow a car to, um, you know, parking along this way, could back in and then out forward onto the road, which is preferable to backing across the sidewalk and onto the road. There's another existing little chunk of sidewalk right there, which we tie into on each side, uh, carried across Kennedy Brothers. And there's another existing segment of sidewalk, which we would leave in place, and then we carry on from there, from the grass area. Not many impacts through here, just a couple of signs and mailboxes up here. The only somewhat significant impact is to this catch basin right here. It just happens to be right where we wanna put the sidewalk, so the proposal would be to take that out and replace it back here. That would still catch all the water from the field here, uh, whatever's getting to that catch basin today. And we would add a second one here, which would catch any runoff from the sidewalk and the grass strip before it hits the road. So across the DR drive, this one, we are proposing to narrow just a bit to the maximum allowable by state standards. We do put in a nice radius here though, so that trucks coming in and out would not track over that grass. And at this point, uh, the sidewalk does curve around that utility pole, which is located right there. There's also a DR sign right here, which is within city right-of-way, but it doesn't need to move in terms of, uh, distance from the sidewalk. We've got plenty of space to get through. Sidewalk comes back to the five-foot typical here, makes a ninety and crosses Main Street. Just a little chunk of sidewalk needs to be added there to tie it into the new exist, or, I'm sorry, existing, fairly new sidewalk in front of the police station. One thing worth mentioning is the type of crossing we're proposing, and that is, uh, right now, on the conceptual plans, we have it shown as a rapid flashing beacon. You've probably seen these around. It's a standard pedestrian sign and under it, there's a little kinda rectangular box and those stay dark until a pedestrian hits the button. Those are activated and they start flashing, um, and it's supposed to alert motorists that there's a pedestrian wanting to cross, and it does increase yield rates. We have put these in. VTrends does have some guidance for it. We're sort of in a gray area, but it's in the conceptual plans now and they will review and determine whether or not, uh, that's something they will cover as part of this So after today, we take the comments received from conceptual plans, the agency, any comments we get here today, continue to design along. The NEPA documentation, that's the environmental permitting, should go in fairly soon, within the next, hopefully, couple of weeks. Then we'll finalize the design, advertise, accept, analyze bids, and construct hopefully soon. But I'm gonna let Dave talk about the schedule as we go forward. So that's sort of the project from a design standpoint in a nutshell, and at this point, I welcome any questions about that piece.
Do we have any questions?
Just a comment. In addition to the RFBs, the rapid flashing beacons, is there any consideration towards doing a bulb out at that pedestrian crosswalk, uh, flashing at police station?
Yeah, there has not been yet, but it's something at this early of the phase of design, we can certainly consider. It would just be a matter of if it can fit in with the budget. If it's curved, that will add some cost, but that's, those are great ways to alert motorists, the pedestrians as well. And it could have a traffic calming effect coming in there too.
Exactly. Thank you.
Sure.
Rennie? Have the, um, property owners that are affected been talked to already or are they going to be talked to?
I've personally gone up both sides of the street, up and down, and I think I've contacted every, every one of them. The two that are major considerations are the Kennedy Brothers and, uh, the R...
CHP.
And we've talked with both of those people. The, and they seem to be in agreement with what's, and encouraging what's happening.
Yeah, I, I guess the question I have is on the Redemption Center because I, I couldn't see it very well from here, but I assume that, that the, the cut, um, at the Redemption Center, because right now it's kind of a, you can come in and go out in another area, that, that is going to be narrowed somewhat?
Yes, yeah, it's...
And whether they're, whether they're aware of that?
Talking about the north end of their property?
The north end, yeah.
Well, yeah, one of the things, um, Rennie, the, the area in front of the hair salon, Amy's Hair Salon, which is a virtual sea of asphalt.
Right.
Uh, we have spoke to Bob Fernstein, the president of Kennedy Brothers, and, uh, prior to, prior to Bob being involved with Kennedy Brothers, Will Grant went through a subdivision process to carve out a piece of land that's associated with the Kennedy Brothers marketplace and to connect that piece to the property associated with Amy's salon to provide for off-street parking. And so the hope here, this grant obviously does not cover improvements to private property, and Bob understands that. And I, I, I believe that he understands that this is really an opportunity to enhance the property, you know, by having a sidewalk in front of Amy's and then a curb cut that leads into a, you know, four-to-six car parking lot, so that vehicles can get off from Main Street and go and park, uh, on that, onsite, and then back out and, and enter onto Main Street, uh, in front. So I think it's both, it'll, it should end up being both an aesthetic improvement to that property and a pretty substantial safety improvement.
And we did specifically mention the turnaround to Bob, and he seemed to be in favor of that at that time, so...
He would've liked to see a city, federal, state pay for his parking area, and that's not something that would be included in the, uh, funding criteria. So the compromise, if you will, was to say, okay, you can have, you have a driveway entrance and you can have a turnaround there, so if he's, chooses to park in that turnaround area, that might happen, but if the other cars are not gonna be able to make this sea of asphalt issue, it's gonna be much cleaner.
Any other questions?
So David, I, I did hand out the timeline. I did not print out the budget, uh, you know, and I know this is small print, uh, you know, so David could talk about... and I know this is small print, you know, so if David could talk about the timeline, I can, I can tell you that our goal is that this is a project first out of the gate in 2018. One of the areas that we continue to work on, you know, this is federal money, so it's highly regulated money, requiring sign-offs from everybody, and, you know, I have a contact in the historic and archaeological division that I left a message with today, David and Judith, hopefully will get back to me. They, there was, they had a picture of a building, an old freight building, that used to be there, that was torn down a number of years ago, and because they thought that that, that this project might have infringed upon that building, and I've, she now is aware that that building was approved to be torn down a number of years ago, and she feels that there really is no impact of this project in her viewpoint, but we need to get her to verify that, and there's somebody else that also has to verify, so we, we, we do need to get those, that clearance, if you will, from them, filed with John, so that there is no holdup on that project in, in this regard. So we, we continue to maintain those contacts, and if we, and if, if so, I think David's, David's schedule here is certainly a realistic schedule.
The questions on the budget, because you probably can't see that, but- Basically, to summarize, and this comes from being a town manager for longer than I care to remember, probably, but I always got the question, what's, are we on schedule or are we on budget, so that's what I want to cover as quickly as I can. The idea of the budget, there's, when the original budget was made, it was made as a guess, when we signed the contract with StanTech, when Mel negotiated that and all, that came out to be about $3,500 higher, however, right-of-way has $8,000 in it, and we don't expect any cost there, so that's going to be in pretty good shape. And the other thing that's happening in the budget, we would anticipate, from just very preliminary information that StanTech is required to give the city of where we're at, we're probably $20,000 under the budget right now. Now that, don't take that to the bank, that's just a guess of where we are now, and we're very early in the project. The schedule has a major effect on that. If the state can get the information that Mel was just talking about, and Eric can get that to them, we will then be in the queue for having the state review process. That review process can go on as long as six months, but it's the information that state's giving us now, that's just for their review. Now, we can get concerned about that timeline, but if we can do everything we can to get good information to them, we'll be in as good a shape as we can be. But that throws us into a late spring, beginning of summer bid date, and we'd be much better off if we could cut out as much as we can. We're, we're ahead now, this meeting is about, almost a month ahead, but we anticipated like six weeks in the original schedule for that. That review that the state now is telling us, oh, we're really jammed up, we might have to take six months. It's just, you're first in the pile, you know, you're on the bottom. The other question that I wanted just to quickly cover with the board as far as pending issues, the flashing signs were talked about, and you were shown, and the bump-out is an idea, that that's the kind of thing that would be good to talk about. Where the council is, if the council was really in favor of those light, the flashing signs, as project manager, I throw out an idea to you, and that is that you talk about it, and if you're in agreement that you really want those signs, which are a bit of a gray area, you could file a letter, or pass a resolution, quick resolution, saying you support them and the reasons why, and I think Mel has whole, kind of a list in his mind of what he might say and that kind of thing. But that might just help the state say, okay, you can put the, they'll be included as, as part of this project. And from what we understand, so far, you're very interested in that kind of thing, to make it safer, there's not a lot of people that are crossing, but there probably will be more. And the idea of can we do anything in the community, help the community slow down the traffic, so that's just something you may want to have some discussion at this meeting or some future time. Another couple of things that are coming down the road is that we will really need to decide how to handle construction inspection, that's, you know, something more springtime when we'll be talking about it, but just, we'll let the, Mel will have to decide just how the RFPs will go out for that. The other thing is, if we have this delayed time, if it looks like we're really going to be into a six-months waiting time for the state to react, that will hold up the planning process, the final plan. We could, if you wanted, the city could decide, city council could decide, let's see if we can save the money by getting out earlier and protecting our place to get a bid date in May, say. If we wanted to do that, that would be putting some dollars at risk, we'd have to get the state's approval to do it, but if, if you decided, okay, yes, this is worthwhile, and that's not at this meeting, but the idea, I just want to throw out the idea to you, that we may not want to wait and really throw it into a late summer construction. We may want to try to pull it back, and what's the risk is, StanTech would be spending money. If the state came out with something different during their review process, StanTech would have to redo that. Now, the risk is not too great, but it is there, and you would have to decide then to do that, so I welcome any questions about what I'm proposing there, or briefing you on, because I really think, keep the project on schedule, it's out of our control, as in a, you know, we just have to wait for the state.
Well, one of the, Mark, I can't remember when, exactly when you came on the board or others, but just to back up here a little bit, when we had the community visit many, many years ago, one of the focuses was on pedestrian safety, and the idea of, you know, getting, getting a way to get to the police station, to and from the police station was, was high, was high on the list. And so Greg Edwards, who is an employee of StanTech, but also chaired the, that arm of the, of the community visit, if you will, he and others put forth an application for this program, and applied for this project, it's a $305,000 estimate, which continues to, I just got sticker shock here of why, but there are a lot of pieces to this project, it's not just calling up, putting some two-by-fours down and calling up crews and having them ship you up some concrete, there's a lot of pieces to this, and, you know, with the addition of a, of a actuated crosswalk there, and a lot of engineering, and a lot of permitting and such, so the numbers add up quickly, but our share, the city council allocated ten percent, the 10% required from the water tower fund, and so there is a $30,500 allocation, and any bills, any of David's time, all of the StanTech bills, when those bills come in, 90% of that is charged to the grant, and 10% is charged to the tower fund, and as long as we keep below the $305,000, then it's, you know, we, we, every, we save 10 cents on a dollar of anything that is less than the 305, and I, and I really, you know, bulbouts cost money, but I, I think that there's, that's something we should consider, you know, having traffic calming sooner rather than later, you know, is something we should, we should look at. You know, I know our public works crew can't stand bulbouts, but, you know, really, that's a, it's a high-speed area, even though it's 30 miles an hour, it's, it, the, that road acts a little bit like a slingshot, despite the, the, the police station being right there. So I think that that's something we should, we should look into seriously, and I, as David mentioned, the, what, when Eric is talking about the gray area of, of the flashing bars, because the state views these based on warrants, and, which is a combination of traffic count and the number of pedestrians, you know, you, some of you are aware of, you have to meet certain warrants to substantiate that type of a crosswalk, and as I mentioned to David, I don't want to oversell this thing, I think that that's the first cross, you know, that is the first crosswalk, as you come into town and you're not, in a town any longer, you're coming to a city, it's time to slow down, and I think that the idea of a push-button flash bar to get people's attention, you know, I think that it's warranted. The problem is, I'm not the one calling the shots, so we think that it's worthy, and, you know, if it means a letter from myself, a letter from Chief Merkel, a resolution from the city council, if necessary, we will bring that back to you, but we're hoping, you know, we're hoping that when StanTech brings this to V-Trans, they will agree that in this instance, you know, there is some uniqueness and, and warranted, so, I mean, I think it'd be great to have a flashing, a flashing bar there, I really would.
Okay, we'll get our first indication when this conceptual plans back, and at that point, somebody will have made a comment whether, you know, they should be removed or-
Yeah.
-whether that might come, so, we'll know soon.
David?
One of the proactive side, my side, is that if the people are reviewing at the state level, know that you want to be considered, have bumpouts considered, know that the signs are something that the board feels are important, if that at least, if there's no resolution, if at least can show that the board had a discussion, that there was general consensus and feeling that that was there, then when the minutes of this meeting go as part of the package, they'll know that, yeah, you're concerned about that thing, and for what reasons.
I'm going to bring that to the point right now, I'd like to see our consensus of opinion as to whether we feel that those lights are necessary, you know, start on your side, Matt? Positive, positive, positive? Rennie?
Yes, particularly because of the speeds there. I know that probably the, the volume of pedestrians crossing is not quite up to what they'd like to see, but, but the speeds involved there, I think, warrant it, yes.
And my, and I'm, I'm in favor as well, and I think it's one of those future, let's build it now, because eventually, if they do get the sidewalk all the way to the, the park and ride, and eventually, within a couple of years, we're, we're hearing that V-Trans will, not V-Trans, Amtrak will be back, and people may be going there to hop a train, so, and they may be finding their means of transportation by foot to get there, but I'm, so I'm in favor.
Very much so.
Okay?
Absolutely.
So council is in favor, and how about the planning commission?
I think the planning commission would be strongly in favor of that, and, and the bulbouts, and if necessary, could write a letter of support as well.
Once I thought, if we do buy them, it'd be possible to talk to the company who sells it to us, and get some sort of package deal on the side, we buy four more-
We're talking about-
And then, like, if we're going to buy one, maybe look at the-
We have an application in, right, Rennie, for-
The other four or five, okay, so it's a half, we're cheaper by the half dozen, I think.
Just seems like we're asking for one, and we won't take it out of the 305, but we'll-
It would be, it would be nice to be able to combine the, the five, along with a, a sixth one, and see if we can get a-
A discount?
Discount. David?
Very nice idea, they're too completely- One project, this one.
Oh, no, it's a different project, I just mean talking to the company selling them, saying if-
You'd have to be bidding them at the same time. I hate to say, you know, there's a problem there, but there is really-
Our five aren't a sure thing at this point, but we may have some answers by next spring on, on the five, so I don't know when that, they're supposed to make a decision on that.
Actually, it's probably within another month, I think so, yeah.
I believe the timeline is like, the talks are talking about it in September, and they give the word out in something like December, maybe, it takes some time to get the word on, and then you have to plan and bid those things.
Well, any, any installation, if, if we were to get our, our five, it wouldn't happen until next year sometime, just because of the weather and stuff, so we'd want to put them on in after, after the spring, so it, it might, it might come together, so, very good. Any other discussion or questions from these gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So we're going to jump back to item D, number five.
So the, the board of listers met at five o'clock, and, and is requesting a correction of the 2017 grant list as it relates to a lot that is on the corner of South Maple Street and, and the southern entrance into Maple Manor. When Glenn and Kathy Rossier sold their property at 181, 181 South Maple Street, they, prior to selling that property, they went through the development review board and received a subdivision permit to carve out a .34-acre parcel with frontage on both South Maple Street and Maple Manor, and the carving out of that parcel went on the punch list, and when Nemrick came and did the adjustments, they, they took the .34 acres off from the, the house that the Rossiers sold, but they did not put the .34 acres on the Rossiers' parcel, and therefore, we printed a tax bill for Glenn and Kathy in the amount of zero. And Joan actually, she catches a few of those, some of them are supposed to be zero, some of them are supposed to be zero, but I can assure you that that one was not supposed to be zero. So what I did was loaded in the acreage, loaded in the neighborhood multiplier, loaded in the grade for the property, no different than any other lot in Maple Manor, and determined the value based on the same methodology used in our 2007 reappraisal to value that property at $45,400. I think that we would all agree that that number is too low, however, the important is to make sure that we're measuring properties with the same yardstick, and so, when you look at other lots in that same area, that's the, that's the number that the system generates. And so, in the, really in the spirit of fairness, the listers is requesting that the city council authorize the correction of the 2017 grant list to include the subject parcel owned by Glenn and Kathy Rossier at a value of $45,400.
Have a motion?
Who makes that motion?
Who makes motion? I have a second. Mark seconds, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
And Lynn will abstain. Thank you. Any other, is that the only one that we?
That's it, for now.
Okay, capital improvement and special funds.
So at the last meeting, Mike, when you weren't here, I, I spent a lot of time going down through all of these items, and I will tell you that I do, I, I really would like to eliminate some of these funds, but, but there was some discussion at the last meeting that even if we were to eliminate them, there was some desire to hold on to, kind of remember that amount of money and purpose, if it was going to be combined with something else, so I'm going to reduce my request for this meeting to involve two funds. I think that the fire department vehicle replacement fund of $10,823.24 should just simply be returned to the fire department fund, and that the records computerization fund, that Joan, that no longer, that the three-dollar per page of the, of the $10 per page for land records, that, that any future, that the, that that be suspended effective July 1, 2017. So like, for instance, if Joan, if there was land records that came in to be filed after July 1, I can tell you, up until June 30th, when $10- 1, I can tell you, up until June 30th, when $10 was paid for land records, $1 went into the records restoration fees, which is required by statute, and $3 went into a Records Computerization Fund. And given the fact that that fund has $55,000 without a plan, I would recommend that the, that the allocation of $3 per page be suspended effective July 1, 2017 and that the City Council consider, that there be a, a plan approved by the City Council by June 30th, 2018 for those funds.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna make a motion to that effect.
Okay.
The Fire Department Vehicle, for purposes of discussion, to, you know, to have something on the floor. For the Fire Department Vehicle Replacement Fund, the money in that to go to, is it just, just the Fire Department budget?
Just return it to the fund, yeah.
Fire Department budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
And. That way, Lynn, there's no issue that it's, that it's like money sitting over in a tower fund or something. It's just, it's, it was really derived from the sale of a fire truck and so it's really fire truck money anyway.
Perfectly would sense.
Yep. And that the Records Computerization Fund be, you use the word suspended?
Yes.
Suspended and that a plan be developed by the city clerk relative to dealing with?
By what date?
September 2018. Was it, you said September 2018?
I said June 30th.
Oh, June 30th, excuse me.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
You got that motion, Joan?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I sense in a way, just keep that $3 in play until after we have a plan and then decide whether or not to, why suspend it for a year if we might find a plan that would say, oh, we still need it.
Well, to be, to be totally frank with you, I don't think that, that the city had the authority to create this fund to begin with because it's not approved. This is a reserve, reserve funds are supposed to be approved by the voters. And, you know, if, if this was approved by the voters, I have absolutely no problem with that. And, but at the same time, since this was approved by the City Council whenever it was approved and obviously, I wasn't working here when this thing was created, but, you know, this, you know, we've, it's generated $55,000 and there's not a plan, all right? I know what the purpose of this is. I think I understand the purpose. Joan feels that there will come a day that, that land records will be digitized and so that lawyers or whatever will do, okay?
Many, many towns. And our clerk treasurer meetings coming in September, I can come back with a plan by the end of September that's gonna use every one of those dollars in that fund. It's not cheap to computerize and different towns have gone with different companies that do that. The majority are going with one who's very, very expensive. We've checked out the alternate ones, which like Williston has gone with, but like Shelburne, South Burlington, Nesset, they're going with the big dogs. They come in, they scan everything, they're paying big bucks. We're a little town, so we're trying to see what are the littler towns doing? And it's all over the place. So, we don't want to just jump into something without consistency with the other towns, what they're using. Ferrisburg is doing NIMRAC, scanning that right into their NIMRAC grand list.
Absolutely.
Yeah. It's a cheaper version of doing that, but long term, I'm sure Ernie will keep it up. He's got his hand on the municipality and, to protect us. But, it won't, the NIMRAC will probably be the cheapest way to go, but Lynn's the only one that I know, not Lynn, Pam's the only one I know, using it so far. So anyways, our clerk meeting's coming up in September. So, I don't want that fund to dissolve and we can bring it to the voters in March to have them endorse for what we've done in the past when we've discovered something we've done wrong and so that it stays in place because those funds are gonna be needed.
So, you know, I don't want to, I could talk all night about land records and maps, okay?
Two minutes, two minutes.
Let me make sure that, so that fun, people understand where I'm coming from, okay? You really are not supposed to have reserve funds unless they're approved by the voters, all right? And so, when this got started, I'm not scolding anybody, I'm just telling, telling you that, is that if you wanted to start a fund, you go to the voters and you get it approved and you create the fund and off you go, all right? And this one didn't. And so, I really think that, I think that we're outside the law. I'm not, I'm not saying, let's return $55,000 to the general fund. I'm not saying that, all right? I could. But I really think that we, we really need a plan. And, and if, if Joan, if the plan is $80,000, then you should know about it. If the plan is $30,000, what are we doing with $55,000? That's all I'm saying, all right? I don't want to just keep doing this and doing this. And believe me, I'm the one that has to get out of the chair, to go in her vault, to pull Book 70, to read the deeds so I can get the middle initial of a guy. I would love to just point and click, okay? Because that's how our maps are done now. We're not right where I want to be, but I don't have to leave my chair to pull out a survey. But I do have to get out of a module and go over here. And so, there really is ways for us to, you know, be on the phone. It's, a lot of it's not just, just about us, it's about who we serve, all right? The ability for us to sit at our desk and Lynn calls up and says, I want to survey the Rossier property, you know, I want to, we want to be able to, as much as we enjoy talking to Lynn, we actually really, but there is, you can get to a point where Lynn doesn't call us at all. Lynn actually goes to virgens.org and goes to the site and she pops up the survey and she doesn't call us at all, all right? But now, now we're talking big time. So, you know, really, there's an opportunity here to have the, have us to be more efficient and to, to serve our customers. That's, that's what it comes down to.
We have a motion?
I would like to just encourage y'all, like, to go to Middlebury's. Middlebury's are online, check out their site. And I think Williston, Williston, South Burlington, I know, you can get those records online. You have to pay right online to get them, but all the stuff is there. That's the upscale I'm talking about that'll wipe those funds right out in a half second. Because they'll come in and backlog, do 40 years worth of search and have them up there. Or, we can go kind of like what we've done with our mapping now and just put it in our grand list with NIMRAC scanning, which will be a lot cheaper. But, it's not where we need to be. Why invest that money in like a step one if they can come in and put you at step 10? And this is where the industry is going with.
And we have to pay every time we go online to get information.
All the time, so.
You're gonna, you're gonna be able to bring out, bring it back, a lot of information come September, once you attend these clerk meetings. So, I think that we got a motion on the floor. Let's go ahead and, and vote on that and then we'll get an update on.
I assume, Joan, that you're in favor of the motion that I just made?
Yeah, I, I am okay with his suspension. And I do, in March, want to have an article in our town meeting vote that sets us right with what we have already set aside. But, I'm okay with this motion.
And financially, all it's happening is $3 that used to go and, would go into this fund, it's actually just gonna go into the general. We're not decreasing the fee by $3.
That's correct.
Okay?
Yeah, it's correct.
I understand that.
That's why the clerk fees in the line, the revenue line anticipated an approved motion, a little risky on my part, 17, 17.5 to 22.5. So, that's, that's where that money went.
All those in favor of ready's motion?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Everyone was in favor. Okay. Number six, we did. Number seven, City Managers Report.
So, I'm gonna just combine A and, A and B here. I give you budget reports for both FY17 and FY18, but I actually just want you to focus on this sheet of paper right here, which is the one that, you know, when you set your tax rate and, and in essence, allocated $73,500 from your, from your FY17 surplus, you can see that we actually have ended the year in a little better shape. I can't remember the number that I showed you before, but it might've been 143 or 151 or something like that. So, once we close out the year, I will tell you that if you're wondering like, like where did $10,000 show up? Well, it's a combination of police fines and also we have to reconcile, there's a lot of grant work that's done in the police department. And when we charge expenses to police grants, it's only capturing the salary, the FICA and the MEDI. And then you do a journal entry to capture workers' compensation and mileage. And the sum of those two can be $5,000. So, it's kind of like found money at the, at the end of the year. So, I, that, the, the delinquent taxes, I'll move right on to item C here at the same time. You'll notice this increase slash decrease of delinquent taxes, that's number right there is showing that we're headed $30,000 in the wrong direction, all right? Now, whatever dollars we collect between today and August 30th, we'll drop that number and the 161 will go up, all right? So, I feel pretty good where we are right now relative to the 161. So, if you wonder what your cushion is, it's the delta between the 161 and the 73.4. So, you know, I know at the last minute, you increase the tax rate by two cents, that's $44,500. You know, had you not done that, you know, you need to, you know, add $44,500 to the 73.5 and that cushion would have been pretty, pretty narrow. But anyway, it's, at least we are ending the year in a little better shape than what I had originally predicted. Fire, after your recent motion, that $29,000 just turned into 40. That's, that's a good thing. But I will tell you that the Fire Department has picked the truck that they want to purchase. And so, there, they will be, there'll be a presentation to the City Council in advance of a March vote on a bond. So, you know, even though, yeah, that's nice to have $40,000 in a bank, you know, when you start talking about a $500,000 bond, that'll put a dent in that in a hurry. And the sewer, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but, but those numbers on the, are on the wrong side of, of break even. So, again, you know, we, I think that we agreed that we would be talking about sewer rates before October 15th. Isn't that what we agree that we would talk about it? Okay?
Let's try to get it done in September so that it's, we're not beating our heads. It may take us two meetings to do it. So.
Yep, okay.
We'll put that on the first part of September agenda.
And so, it's still, you know, obviously, at current budget, it's still early for me to be, still early, we're only two months into the year. There is a delinquent tax sheet that shows where we're at. I will tell you that there are some property owners in here that are gonna be getting a notice soon relative to a potential tax sale of their property. Certainly, there's not a lot of properties involved here in 12, 13 and 14. But, you know, there's, a lot of municipalities would be jealous of, of our level of taxes and of delinquencies when you bill out $4 million and to only have $50,000 in arrears. But, I would prefer that to be zero, to be honest with you.
Anything else, Mel, that you want to talk about?
I know, I know there was a couple of things. One is, I wanted, if you haven't been over to West Main Street, the, the sidewalk extension to Claybrook is done in front of, there's three property owners there that we work with and there's a new sidewalk that's on topsoil and landscaping. And so, now there is actually sidewalk connectivity up West Main Street and all the way down to the end of Hopkins Road to Michael Daniels' property. So, I wanted to alert you to that. Also, just want to let you know that your, the Fire Department needs off storage, something for off storage, and they have purchased a container, roll, 40-foot roll-off that they would like to locate near the upper level solar panels. So, just beyond the Virgens Pant and Water District. So, if you happen to be going to recycling this weekend and you see this big box on the right-hand side of the road, I wanted to let you know that that's what it's about. I don't totally know, Mike would know better than I, what's going in this container, but there is, they run out of room and to some degree and need some off-site storage. And to me, this is not heated, there's no lighting and anything, it's just to store.
They're going to be building props so that they can do extra, different events, penetrating a roof, forcible entry, different things. And so, they're, they're framing up some props and those props will be stored in that building and that will actually be a training site at some point. We'll, we'll go down and, and do physical training right there. So, it's supposed to enhance our abilities. So.
Can you tell us about what happened on the fire?
The floor, the Fire Department's floor upstairs?
Well, it's done. I, I think that it's fine. You know, I don't, you know, the entire floor is done. You know, relative to, you know, it's, it's hard to determine like, you know, in advance, like what is the, what this thing gonna look like. I think that it looks fine. I wouldn't say that it looks, you know, A plus. It's not, you know, the entry to the Bixby Library, but I think that it's a, a good job, you know? So, I'm fine with it.
Is there some people that aren't fine with it?
Well, you know, it's not perfect. Like I said, it's a, it's a garage floor that's been, you know, sealed with epoxy and, you know, I, I, it's one of those things. I don't, I don't know, people end up, you know, coming up with their own expectations. I mean, if they really felt that this was gonna be like a mirror, I think that their expectations were, you know, but I, but it's very possible that Rick Pease, the way that he described what it was gonna look like, and then people create an image of what it looks like, you know, I, is it perfect? No, it's not, all right? But, is it sealed and protected and whatever? I think it is, all right?
So, just an issue of aesthetics over structure?
Yes, yeah.
It's not like going in and floating, floating the floor. And so, you get that same depth and.
You can tell it's patched.
If you can tell it's patched. It's some, some sheetrock. If I did it, you can tell it was patched.
But, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't know a lot about this and I hate to use the word 31,000, use the word only in the same sentence, it's $31,000. But we spent $31,000. We didn't spend 131,000, we spent 31,000. It's a big room, it's a big floor, it's all epoxy. I think that the floor, there was two things really, yeah. Part of it, it was aesthetics, but also it was about protection, all right? And now, we have the right material over that floor and I hope that, you know, that that floor is now properly protected.
And you gotta remember the material that was there, how porous it was versus the material that they replaced and it's not as porous. So, you're gonna have the different in, in the, the surface of the finish, the look of the finish. So, but like Mel says, they did what they were paid to do and it, you've got a, a good floor. And he said, Rick said to me, he says, you know, in five years or so, you're gonna have to come in and put another sealer coat on that. I mean, you, you drive grit and dirt into anything, you're gonna have to take in, put another layer of sealer in there to keep it in good condition. Otherwise, if you let it go too long, you'll be back where you were.
Anything else?
That's it for me.
Okay. First off, thanks, Rennie, for running the meeting on July 18th. I appreciate that. Next, City Voice, should be going to the printer either tonight or early tomorrow morning. morning. Met with GMP about Falls Park, and not gaining a hell of a headway with that, so, and I've got other fish in the, I've got other irons in the fire right now, that I'm trying to keep some stuff moving, and so, that's kind of taking a backseat, and I'm trying to find the right timing with the right people to make approach, one of the ideas that, I believe I mentioned it to Mel, if we can't use the land, why don't we quick claim deed it back over and let them maintain it, and let them pay taxes on it, you know, get some money out of it, so, if, don't know if that's a food for thought, that's a little drastic, it's a little bit drastic, but, you know, one of the things that they brought up is the fact that they need a second feed into the city of Virgens, to go to that power plant, they really need it, to make it a dependable line, this is a critical area, and they need that, so, there is some discussion, and early discussion in Green Mountain Power, as to how that could get accomplished, so, don't know how soon, but that's going to be a point of discussion for the council at some point.
Would they consider buying another piece of land for Virgens?
And moving the wires, or?
No, making a, deed over the property to them, and they replace it with a piece of land in town, that we could make a park?
That wasn't, that wasn't, you know, even a thought at the point, it was more or less, can we do something? We talked about even temporaries, things, cement slab, and a tent that would fasten to the cement slab, and they said no, because it wouldn't be there year-round, and so, we talked about trying to do the things, and to see if they would move off their point, and they said no. And, but they did give it some serious thought, so, I want to thank Mel and Lowell for attending the tour of the Valley Vista, Jim Douglas was honored at that point, because of his work with drugs and the attention that it needs, and so, he'll have a plaque both there and in Bradford, in his honor. Senior Cracker Barrels, just some quick items, Farmers Market location, they like it, something about vouchers, there is something that the Farmers Market didn't do, but will do, so that the seniors can use, get some vouchers to use at the Farmers Market. One of the, they're talking about transportation, they need a program to support them, because some of them don't drive at night, or even don't drive, and they were looking for a program for, so that they could get ride to funerals and other events. I've reached out to three ministers so far, and I've got more to contact, to see if the churches might be able to help out in some respects, and at some point, want to do something on front porch for them, so. Actor bus schedule meets their needs for the dinners that they have, but they, otherwise, they don't attend, they don't have a set schedule to go there and pick them up and drop them off as specific. There were some questions about mowing, it was some area that was considered wetland, Mel was doing some research, I don't know if we still got any further, we're not going to talk anymore about that, to try to get things done here. One of the things they asked for is, a schedule could be put out for construction of the gas line, so that if they're going through an area, or where the construction is, if they can avoid it, and somebody from Vermont Gas is trying to give me an indication of what that is, and I'll try to keep that posted as I get it, so. Onto another subject, so far, we've had, year-to-date, over two hundred boats coming into the city, and as of August first till tonight, we're up to over a hundred. So, it's been a busy month, so, that's good. So, now, I'd like to move to, business continued, I'd like to ask for a motion to go into executive session, to address point A, B, and C, to set salaries for the city manager, zoning administration, and administrative assistant to the board of listers, and to set compensation for the city clerk, treasurer, and there's been some, I'll call it a misunderstanding, but Melissa hasn't been, received a pay increase yet, we'll let the council act upon that, but going further forward from here, I'd like to make sure that Joan gets authorized to set that increase, so. So.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Okay. Agreed by Lowell, seconded by Rennie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going to go into executive session, we'll have to go upstairs, I guess.
Okay, ready?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm writing up what the motion is, so.
You're going to make a motion? To come out of executive session?
I'll make a motion, come out of executive session.
All right, Lowell made the motion, come out of executive session, I have a second?
Correct.
Matt made the second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, and so, we will take and then move right to adjournment, because we?
No, we've got to make these motions.
Make that records?
Right, it has to be on, it has to be on public.
All right, so, who's going to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Rennie?
I'll make the motion to compensate the city manager at three percent, including the positions of zoning administrator and administrative assistant to the board of listers, and to compensate the city clerk treasurer at the rate of three percent.
Okay, I have a motion, and a second?
Increase, yes.
Increase.
Increase, yes.
Second.
And Lowell seconds it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, unanimous, and so, now we'll?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And do we have a second for adjourn?
Second.
Jeff made the second, and so, we adjourn at?
Seven forty-four.
Seven forty-four, thank you.